All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us here for the Central School District Board of Directors meeting in May of 2020. We'll be doing tonight's meeting virtually from Western Oregon University, similar to how we did it last month. So I'd like to go ahead and get started with the flag salute. Jerry, would you mind leading us in the flag salute?
Glad to. My flag salute is to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent to go over tonight's agenda.
We have just one addition to the agenda. It's specific to licensed staff, and I'll do that in a minute here. And then I'm sort of flipping the order. I'm going to do the superintendent report first and then follow that up with the questions that have come in from the community in the last couple of days. So I think there's been a lot of information in the report that will help, and then we'll answer a few of the questions that have come to us over the last couple of days. So that is the adjustment to the agenda.
Okay, that sounds good. Those are the questions, are those that came in response to the board agenda being public and asking for public comment?
Correct.
So this is the process that we use now while we're doing our meetings virtually. We ask for public comment ahead of time since we don't have a means of accepting public comment during our meeting. One thing for the board, since we are virtual, I may not see you or if you have something to say, don't hesitate to speak up. You have to interrupt a little bit when we're virtual like this, so don't hesitate. Make sure that if you've got something to say that catches my eye so I can call on you. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent to go ahead and...
Shall we let's take roll call?
Yes, let's do roll. Aurelia, will you link it up?
Yeah.
Please.
Do you want to just do that, please?
Well, she should...
Well, you want to come off of mute and roll call for me, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Jan?
Yes, I'm here.
Peggy?
Here.
Dawn?
Here.
Dorsey?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
The girl?
I believe he is trying to get online, so we'll watch for that, Aurelia, and I'll let you know when he has joined.
Okay. All righty, and Steve?
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks, sorry. She's got to actually physically hear everybody say it so she can see them. Okay.
Okay, thank you for reminding me to do that. I'll go ahead and turn over now to the superintendent to start with our first topic here.
So we are, the first topic is, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so this is a little bit different because obviously we are in unprecedented times, but with that, we want to just take a minute to do a recognition and really with our teacher appreciation resolution. So I am going to read it into record as we do each year for what they do and have continued to do for us, really especially over the last month and a half if we've been in this. So, "Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service," and I'm going to also add, "and learning and growing in the virtual world of the classroom that we are in right now. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Central School District Board of Directors proclaims May 4th through the 8th, 2020 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Central School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work." Adopted this fourth day of May, 2020, and then Steve, you and I will sign that at the end of the meeting. So I cannot, as a superintendent, thank our teacher leadership, what they have done for the last several weeks, how I've watched them get online and support students, and again saw that today with our elementaries going virtually. So I just want to say a great thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, you all know how much you mean to me, and I am thankful to have you as part of our staff and in this great community. So appreciate you all, and we'll continue to celebrate you throughout the week. With that, I'm going to shift because I also have a staff recognition, and this is, again, a little bit different because normally we do this and give out certificates, which we will be moving in that direction, or this person will get that. But one of our staff members has been recognized and honored with a, I'll say, a Hall of Fame Award. So I'm going to read a little bit about the Melba Day Sparks Henni Award, and then I'll share with you the recipient that has received this within our school district. So the Melba Day Sparks Henni Award is given each year as a career achievement award to adult who has extraordinary service with Oregon's Thespians or Oregon High School Theater. Troupe directors are invited to nominate both thespian and non-thespian adults who have made exceptional contributions to the growth of theater and theater education in Oregon. And again, this is Oregon's Theater Hall of Fame. And with that, I want to share that this honor has been given to Jeff Witt, our teacher at Central High School. So I just captured a few comments from students that were shared as we received this information about this high award. Jeff Witt, or Mr. Witt, is truly an incredible director and part of the Oregon's Thespians, and we are so lucky to have them, him, which I completely agree with. Everything that I've learned from Mr. Witt is something that I can take with me through the rest of my life. Mr. Witt is by far one of my favorite teachers in the world, and you can tell how much he cares for his students just by walking into a room he's in. His presence is positive and welcoming. So with that, I just want to recognize again Jeff Witt, who has received the honor, a high honor, with the Melba Day Sparks Henni Award. So congratulations to you, Jeff, for that accomplishment.
Yay.
Yay. Awesome.
Yeah, pretty amazing to have that within our community, so it does incredible work.
Well deserved.
I will never forget the day I interviewed. He had a concert, and I finished interviewing with you, and it was a long day, but I thought, I'm going to just go sit in and listen, and it was by far one of the most amazing concerts. And he played two of my favorite songs, which I thought, oh, isn't this interesting? So just was wonderful to see as I came in and just get to see that program continue to grow at Central High School. So very excited about that award for him.
Very good. Thank you for both of those, the Teacher Appreciation Week and also the recognition of Mr. Witt. And I'll just add that I couldn't say it strongly enough on behalf of the board just how much we appreciate what the teachers have been doing, the whole staff, what you all have been doing to get us through this unprecedented circumstance, and it's noticed and it's appreciated, and we just really, really thank you all. So with that, I think we are going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I'm going to quickly put a PowerPoint up that I put together because I want to... Yep. So I'm just, we're waiting just a minute so it can be, so the community can see it as well. So just give us a second here as we shift. So I wanted to take some time this evening to go through just everything that has taken place since our last board meeting, when really we had started the beginning stages of moving into and receiving the guidance as it relates to distance learning. So we're going to go through, it's a pretty lengthy PowerPoint, but I think it's going to answer a lot of questions and continue to spark other questions that may need to be answered as we work through our processes. So you're going to see it here once I go to the first slide. It's a blank slide here. So I want to start first with, this is the definition by the Oregon Department of Education as it relates to distance learning. Our initial implementation has been a mix of blended learning strategies, beginning with our learning packets that we started with, and now we're shifting to a mix of virtual learning and the continued learning packets where appropriate. We are doing, again, as we share this, we are doing this through different modes of communication, and like we said, that's been through packets. It's been through phone calls, emails, apps such as Remind to make connections with students and families, and then obviously, as we have begun with our Google Meets and our virtual learning platform. So again, this is where we sort of began and grounded ourselves within the work that we have put forward over the last month. This next slide shows the general guidance, and this is what grounded us as we began to build our distance learning for all approaches and learning. Again, how do we connect students regularly with teachers in different modes? How do we team together in that teacher, family, and caregiver work as a team anchored in partnership? And again, I know that that's been some learning both on our side and I'm sure with families as well, as we help co-facilitate these learnings. How do teachers continue to monitor, report, and record? We're working through that still, and we'll share a little bit about that as well. And then again, those flexible opportunities, because as I've said before, we're trying to meet families where they are at. You have families that are working from home. You also have essential workers that are working, and so students are home by themselves. So really trying to put together thoughtful learning for all students involved. Slide three continues with some critical responsibilities that have, again, grounded our work as we built our distance learning for all approaches. Again, what we have been sound in is that continued, that students feel that belonging, care, and connection, and well-being, and the mental health and social emotional health that has been at the forefront in our conversations as we have built this model. I have great faith in our teachers that we will get the learning going, but this has been the priority as we have begun this process. How do we continue to nurture those relationships as before with families and within our community? Again, as I've shared before, centered on equity and that we're outreach and communicating to, in every effort, to both parents and families and our caregivers. And then again, how do we have that collaboration and communication amongst us, which we are continuing to learn, get better, and grow at within our process? So next is really focusing on the actual three pillars that really create distance learning for all. And so I'm going to spend a little bit of time just explaining because I think now we have more, as we've really dove into the guidance, it makes it clear of what the pathways we can use to help educate students. So this is focus on one of the pillars, teacher-led learning. This is specific to grade level learning, and this is directed specifically by teachers and supported by teachers. Again, the approaches that we have rolled out with our plan have involved both paper pencil packets as we launched at all three levels, and now we have moved into virtual learning, which is where a lot of our teacher-led learning will now come from. Again, this is focused on students, creating those opportunities for well-rounded learning, and then differentiating and adjusting that learning. It's anything from right now that we had today, for example, we started our elementary Google Meets. At times, we had a percentage of students onboard in those meetings and that teaching time, and then afterwards, we're reaching out to connect with the rest of the students. So it's really that mix of experiences that we're trying to match and meet both students and families where they're at. So again, that's the first pillar that is part of the distance learning for all. The second pillar is specific to learning and just supplemental activities. Again, this may be connected to the teacher-led learning, which we're building and will continue to build, but it's also led by the student and family. So again, one of the things that we've talked about a lot is building routines for students as they go through this process, so building in time to do independent reading throughout the day, playing board games or doing puzzles, cards, writing and drawing, again, listening to music and arts and crafts. That is all a part of how we build every day within our school system. And again, we're trying to continue to do that at home as well. So again, I think this is the second pillar of the three pillars that we are focused on within our distance learning. And then the third is meeting nutritious and wellness needs. And again, this is going back to the, really working towards, you know, in that structured routine, establishing breakfast, establishing lunch. So those routines are followed, having physical wellness activities throughout the day to really develop that whole child approach as we think about what distance learning looks like. Because if you think about a school, a regular school day, our students would come in, they'd have breakfast, they'd go to class, they'd do some learning, they may go to music or PE, they may also go to recess, they'll go back to doing some learning. So again, trying to meld with the families what that will look like in the homes as we continue to educate students in that collaborative approach. So again, I think one of the things that we want to just remind everyone is those routines that you continue to try and set up and work with your family members and the students in your home, that we want you to continue to keep working on that. Because again, we know that that's a big part of being successful at home and in school. And right now, school is in the home, and so how do we help set those routines moving forward from that perspective? The next slide is developed, we developed a district. As we began this, it was very important to me that voices within our school district were a part of that process. So representatives from our Central Education Association, our Oregon School Employment Association, other staff and administration have been literally working every day to build our distance learning for all. We broke them into four subcommittees. Teaching and learning, which focused really on how do we get the teaching and learning side up and running on our virtual classroom technology, which in itself was such a big lift, and I'm going to go into a little bit more details of those pieces. There was some professional development that we knew we would need to do, and so we have a professional development subcommittee and then a logistics subcommittee, and that is really looking at all the protocols that are related to developing this new learning moving forward. And I want to share that mantra down below that we started with. We really, as we began this work with the committee, focused on, really, we need to think like a student, we need to think like an educator, we need to make sure that we understand and think of the learning environments that our students are in, and there are, those can vary from household to household, as well as thinking of the family and what they're trying to build together collectively as we do this work together. So again, this is our first steps that we did. This next page, we, as part of this process, this is a snapshot of what we call project charters. So each subcommittee started to develop their teams and what we needed to accomplish. One of the key things that I want to point out on this slide that you'll see in each of the boxes, and each box represents one of the committees, a subcommittees, but you'll see at the bottom the district capacity assessment score as of four or five based off of the ODE rubric. We asked the committee to begin to really assess ourselves of where we are based on a scale of one to five, with five being the highest, like we know how to do this and we are proficient and distinguished at this. Those areas included three parts. Technology connectivity and capacity was one part of the assessment, educator efficacy for online learning, and then student efficacy for online learning. So as we began to build our distance learning, as we took a snapshot of, hey, how do we feel where we are on an assessment? All three of those, you can see their scores, but together, we're at about a 2.4 assessment of where we are off of a five-point scale. So right there, I knew that we were going to need to do some heavy lifting to get us going based off of where our systems were as we built moving forward. So again, that just gives you a snapshot of where we started and the committees and how they did. I think it's important to note, you know, you see different leadership. It was very important to me that leadership represented and that the teams had a mix of staff amongst them, and so you can see a pretty variety of staff that we have on those committees. And those committees have continued to expand, and we've added more staff as we've moved forward. The next slide really is starting to look at the work done by the committees. And slide nine is, this is the initial implementation steps to develop the actual distance learning plan for the teacher-led instruction. And again, this was developed by the teaching and learning subcommittee. Again, it was specifically about the new virtual learning classrooms. As I shared at the last board meeting, you'll see here, number 11, as an example, we identified safety specifically to virtual learning as a priority. And this, what I'll say is, this is still a work in progress for all of this implementation. We have taken great steps in baseline guidance, instruction per time per grade level, identifying our instructional format, but again, this is continued learning, working together to build these. We feel very confident that the work that we have done specifically on safety will allow us to really keep the work moving forward. And we were very grounded, and we wanted to make sure that we had spaces and environments that this learning would be safe. So again, these are the steps we started with on the teaching and learning side. The next slide is just an example that was done by the committee. Here you can see, and again, this is just a snapshot from their notes, of one of the big processes that we needed to build was a Google Classroom. You can also see as an example down there that there needed to be essential standards alignment through the end of the year to get our virtual learning up and running. And so again, this is what the teams did. They worked through and developed what we need to do and create to get this digital learning up and moving forward. You'll see, while at the same time our staff was doing packets and building packets to share, they were also learning how to build Google Sites and Google Classrooms. So you see two, these are two internal sites that we have built, some of our technology gurus in the district. On the left side, that is some of our beginning pieces that we were asking licensed staff to build a Google Site, to take a video of themselves. Right side is our classified staff site, being able to, again, give them some professional learning because some of their jobs have changed a little bit as we move forward and continue to learn and grow in this area. So again, we did some lifting just on ourselves from that perspective. And then I just want to just show you, these are a couple examples of what a Google Classroom looks like. So in the upper-left-hand corner, for example, that's the central CTE. So you see all the links above where you can jump into or go into where a specific class may be. Mr. Witt's, I believe, Mr. Witt's Google Classroom is down in the lower-left. In the upper-right is Adrian Galt's 7th Grade Language Arts, which again is our, she is our union president on the CEA. And then I think just to show you that it's not just about our licensed staff, but all of our staff, that bottom-right corner is actually the counseling site for the middle school. And so they have really done some heavy lifting to be able to get materials onto sites to allow our students to begin to really do that virtual learning. You'll see some consistencies. We tried to, as we built the teaching and learning team, that as best we could, we wanted consistency so parents saw a similar type of approach where, especially for secondaries, there were periods, they each have hours to check, have kids, students be able to check in. They call it office hours listed, so there is constant connection and ways to be able to reach students on a daily basis. The next slide is a snapshot of what we called the project charter action log. So they not only built a project charter, but there were four of us, myself, Jason Clark, Jared Pressler, who is also part of our technology team, and Emily Mensor, who is one of our, is our communications consultant. We, as they were doing their meetings, we would meet afterwards, and we would go, okay, what are their action logs that they need to accomplish? And so we took their brainstorming and really got them focused into, this is what we need to accomplish as we build this. Because again, that's part of it. You want, you're having a lot of building going on, but you need to make sure that they're taking, continuing to take steps forward to build what we need to do to support students. So again, this is a snapshot of that. We would meet, subcommittees literally met every day. Every other day, we would have a large district committee meeting, and we have been doing that for over a month. And just this past week, now we have moved to having meetings about two to three days a week because we're far enough along. We're still having to do them because we're, I'm going to go through some things and share that we've had a lot of learning in this short process to be able to support students in this new environment. So this shows, just a snapshot, we built a whole new professional development website for our staff to help them learn and grow as quickly as they could. So you'll see here, you see at the top, again, our professional learning site, classified staff, because again, there's going to be different training for classified staff as well as for our licensed staff. You also see in the middle there, we are in the process of building a Get Fit site to, again, remind our staff that they need to be healthy and happy as much as we ask them to make sure that our kids are moving in that, or students are moving in that direction as well. So this is just a snapshot of our PD site. The next slide is just a little bit more detail because we're trying to keep it up date and based off of the needs that we're hearing from staff. So again, that left far side is just a snapshot of our classified site. You'll see in those boxes, they're specific to different parts of our classified staff, whether it be transportation or instructional assistance. The middle one is just a snapshot of the administrative supports, and then the right side is our licensed staff. We have been really focused on three areas. Obviously, our Google is our platform, so making sure that staff feel comfortable in that, focused on the whole child, so that our continued social and emotional growth for students, and then continuing to enhance student opportunities, which is really focused on engagement in that virtual learning new world. So staff can go in and work at their paces they need to, to help them learn and get better in this new field. Because they were not trained, some staff have been trained in virtual learning, but not all staff have been trained in virtual learning. So this was a big lift for us from a staff side, and we have done just amazing work in the school district in getting this going. So this is just a snapshot of the data. A couple things that I want to point out, so we've had 1,147, and this data is as of last Wednesday because I needed to just pull and get the PowerPoint up onto the website. So we've logged over 1,100 hours of PD. That's equivalent to 138 workdays. We've had 618 PD responses logged into student growth and achievement, which is one of our strategic goals, because we also have built this based off of our four strategic goals. And then you can see that 860 PD responses logged into staff leadership and continuous improvement, so they're continuing. I think it's important to note, because I continue to have ongoing conversations with our union leadership, licensed staff are working extremely hard in building this. They are doing the professional learning, but as I've had conversations with our leadership, you look there and say, oh, license has only done 14.3%. They're literally watching and building. They're going to go back and add in, there's a PD, a professional development form that they can complete. Part of that is also tied into their licensing. So although that looks small, please know that they are learning and building, and then we'll come back and fill out forms when they have the time to do that. But I think that just just shows the dedication of our staff. Our classified staff are having to learn very quickly in the technology world and have done some great things moving in that direction as well. The next slide just shows some reflective comments shared from staff as they've completed this professional learning, because part of, on our forum that we asked them to do is just give us a little bit of reflection of what you're learning as you've gone through this process. I also want to share that I received a text today specifically from one of our principals, and just sharing that, today was the launch really of true all-onboard virtual learning for elementaries. And it was shared to me today that staff, a couple of staff said to principals that they were, know that the slower approach may not have been liked by very many, but also know that it has allowed them to get kids prepared, and that today's engagement was so much more than they had expected because of some of the heavy lifting they did the weeks before, and just getting students ready and prepared to move to this platform. So again, we're doing a lot of listening of both our community and our staff as we build this, and we will continue to do this, but I think this just shows a little bit of a reflection of what our staff is having to learn, build, adapt, adjust, and do the same thing again, because that is what we're trying to be grounded in as we do this work moving forward. bit of a reflection of what our staff is, is having to learn, build, adapt, adjust, and do the same thing again. Because that is, is what we're trying to be grounded in as we do this work moving, moving forward. So that's a little bit about our professional Subcommittee and some of the work that we've had in this, this heavy lifting to begin. This again, snapshot of the Project Charter of what our tech team has been building. I mean, it's everything from Chromebook distribution to helping to get our Wi-Fi set up, which is still a work in progress and probably one of my biggest frustrations that we continue to have to work through. Staff technology needs, remote access, because we've had to build a few things on the internal side to support staff. Some community partnerships that we've built in the technology world to be able to support some of the things that we are, we are moving forward with. So that's a little bit of the snapshot of the work that our technology team has done. So here's, here's some data, and I think this is huge. Because if you look at those numbers, and I'm going to start with the elementary, the 1,497. Based off an email today, we are three students short of 100% that have a Chromebook. So 100, almost 100% of our elementary schools have technology in their hands. I think that is amazing and, you know, it's going to, that's going to serve us very well moving forward. When it comes to our middle school, we have 66% of our middle schools that, that were deployed and to get a Chromebook. Again, I remind people that doesn't mean that students may not need them, they may have them at home. So again, remember, we are working with and meeting families where they're at from that. And then you can see at the high school, we're, we have 491, that's 51% of high school students that were in need of a, of a Chromebook. So, I do want to say that this Wednesday, we are doing another deployment of Chromebooks as a makeup. So, so families who did not, and if you still need a Chromebook, you can come and to the high school, similar route from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Wednesday. So we're going to do a couple more sessions of that to make sure. And again, I just think it's important, you see the pictures of what our staff have been doing. That upper-left, that is our high school library. There are thousands of plastic bags with Chromebooks. The middle picture is just their checklist of everything that they needed to do, and then you can see the, just the different ways that we had the deployment of our Chromebooks, which our data team was very huge with. I'm, I'm going to give a huge shout-out to Denise Chase, who is our librarian at the high school, but has really been the lead with other librarians and amazing staff that have come in and cleaned the Chromebooks and cleared the Chromebooks and made sure that they are, were ready to go with everything that they needed on them and off them because, again, we had little kids having, certain things were on Chromebooks for student, younger students and just building those pieces. So I just, I give great credit to that team and what they have done to distribute Chromebooks. The next is another breakdown. This is specific to our Wi-Fi as we continue to build into this. As I've shared with the board, this is probably my, my most frustrating piece is not in the fact that we can't get it built, we are waiting for equipment, just like a lot of people across the state and the country. So just know that this is a work in progress. We think, we believe we'll be able to have spots going this week. There's a couple more. I was hoping tonight I'd be able to say yes, the launch, but we've had some, a few things today that we've had to work through, so please know, community, more, more will come probably tomorrow and/or Wednesday to really start moving in that direction. But this shows that we have 1,890 households in our school district, and our data team has, has really been able to narrow that down. There are 221 families that we still don't have knowledge of connectivity, so it's, again, we just didn't have enough follow-up with them as we are reaching out, so we're trying to continue to do that. But we have 86 families with no connectivity and 40 families with unreliable. So we've, and what you can see on the, the screen there, that is actually our transportation route software that is helping us to develop our Wi-Fi hotspots. So our transportation department has been a huge part with our technology team to really build where we might need to build connectivities. Because we're, again, we're trying to build connectivity outside of the schools in the parking lot as well as have mobile connectivities because there are spots in our community that we may need to put a bus or connect some connectivity so kids have access through their Chromebooks. So again, I think it's just huge what our technology staff has done. Next is our logistics team. And one other thing real quickly with our technology team, they are also helping to build the website so families can get to classrooms easier. So please visit the distance learning page, which is on our district website because that will allow families to get directly to the schools and the links to, to teacher classrooms. So again, I would just wanted to do a reminder of, of that. Again, this is a snapshot of our action log for our logistics team. Again, this is a small group of staff that we, really sets those. We sit in Subcommittee meetings and then we develop what, what we're hearing that their action plans need to be. So the Logistics Committee has truly built literally every protocol necessary to make school function, function. And I'm just going to give you a couple of areas that we've had to build thus far. We have had to revamp our attendance system, and when I mean attendance, we are looking at engagement, not actual attendance, but are students engaged and are we connecting with them? They built all of our staff surveys because we've had to do some surveys as we began this. They built our parent survey, our initial parent survey that went out that asked about technology needs and supply needs. They've also built protocols for personal belonging retrieval that we're still working through in the buildings. They've built a process for home, our home wellness checks because we did have to and are going to continue to do those. And then, for example, the protocol of live virtual meetings and teaching. So that just gives you an idea of some of what they have done. I'm going to give you a couple snapshots here. And again, we, we had some guidance on attendance from the state, and so we, I wanted to as best we can because we're having to build a lot of new processes for our staff. So we were able to keep our attendance the same in Power School so they didn't have to learn another new thing. This is, you know, again, I did a snapshot of this on Wednesday as I built the PowerPoint. What I can tell you is today in our Logistics Committee, we have to narrow down our, our choices. And so, we're working that this will be shifted to support our staff in how we are connecting with kids. So again, I'm going to keep repeating myself that we're doing a lot of learning, implementing, and then adjusting to make sure that we're meeting the needs of what we need to for connecting with our students and our families, but then giving us some good data to adjust where we need to adjust. Because we are trying to connect with as many students and as much as possible, and this data allows us to, to do that. The next one is, is the live broadcast, and there has been a lot of discussion in regards to live broadcasts. One of the things that I will share with this is that when teachers do live recordings, they are, they are actually recorded. We are asking teachers to record them. These recordings are then stored on the teacher's Google side, so only the teacher has access to it, and there is a handful of our technology department that has full access to all Google within the school district, and I think that's important. Some of, some of these meetings we can take, they can edit them. So if they want to put up some content that they've gone over, then that allows staff to go back, edit that content, and post it as, for kids to go back and refer to. We talk a lot about in the normal classroom, we have things on the wall or resources that we give to kids to refer back. That is part of the process that we are building with the live recordings if teachers do need them. We also are doing the recordings of the live meetings and teaching really to protect both our students and staff. There is bullying and cyberbullying, we know and have talked about before, that those issues will have come up, potentially those may come up, and so by recording, it allows us to really go back, and if we do, if there is an issue, we have the ability to go back and see that. We worked very hard to make sure that this part of the, because this is new. This is a very new territory for us in doing the live meetings. So again, we just want to be able to go back and review. We are still working through how long we need to record, record and keep these videos. We're doing, or I'm doing some work, at least minimally, we will use them through the end of the year, but I also know, and Cease and I haven't had a conversation, but there's some retention laws that we have to take into consideration, and I don't know yet, and we're still working through that, if that would actually play into this as well. So those are some of those next steps that we are continuing to navigate. I think it's really important as you look at the screen here that, at the top, it says this is a living, changing document that will be updated as we learn together, because that really has been our focus as we put these forward. So again, this is just one section of what the logistics team and a couple examples that they have put together. The next section is focused a little bit more detail on high schools. I think it was, is really important as we look at the difference, high school specifically because again, as I've stated, high schools are still receiving credit. And so, I just want to share a couple slides just with terms that I think is going to help people as we continue to, to move forward. So, these are definitions specific to when the term ended for seniors versus ninth and 11th graders. So as of March 13th, when we close, that is where we are demonstrating courses, and if they were in good standing and passing, they were graduated. We are encouraging students to continue to engage in learning, but again, we have students that have met the graduation criteria based off of the definition as defined by Oregon Department of Ed. You will see down below that there are some sections where students that are still taking advanced placement or dual credits, they still have work that they are completing to meet that expectation. And then you can see on the right side, the difference between ninth grade, that they're through the end of the school year, and there, we are continuing to try and engage students in every capacity moving forward. The next slide is focused in on grading. And again, all levels K through 12 are a pass, no pass, and a little bit of an incomplete. And so this is really focused on what that means. You will see in both of these slides that if there is any concern, for example, all the seniors, we were required to reach out by phone to every single senior. So administration, counselors, other staff have been reaching out to the seniors to continue to have those conversations of if they've met the criteria to graduate, or if they need to work together on what you look to see there is what's called a personalized graduation plan. And so we are giving as many opportunities to, to get our seniors across the graduation platform by June and really in through to August, because we have, they have till August to complete the work. Again, on the right side, same thing, we want our students engaged to, to earn that credit with a pass. If they do have an incomplete, there is avenues that we will build credit-earning assurance plans. I will tell you that's still a work in progress with the high school because we're still learning about what that might look like as we are building into that. So again, that's a little bit about grading. This is a little bit more clear about what does considered passing mean? That they've demonstrated the learning or the standards that the, the teachers have identified. Again, they can earn that credit, or they have the 24 credits because that did not change from graduation requirements. And then again, that they complete those requirements if they're in accelerated, again, that advanced placement or called dual credit types of courses. On the right side, again, passing, that they're meeting those essential learning over the entire semester, and then they would earn that credit moving forward. I think it's really important to identify, the pass, no pass has really been to make sure that we hold students or have, allow students to be whole. This does not affect GPA, right? Because again, that's been some of the conversation, this keeps students as whole as possible as we work through these difficult times. And what I'm going to say is, universities are very aware, everyone across the country is, is dealing with this. So universities, as we've been in conversations as superintendent with the Oregon Department of Education and them sharing information with us about the HEC boards, which is the governing body for universities, we're all working together to try and make sure that students are in a best place, that they can enroll and be involved in college if they choose to go that path. So I think it's really important to identify that because it's an important part of the process, because we are trying to deal with a difficult situation for the second part of a semester. Again, this is definitions about just incompletes and what that would look like. Again, we, we want to be clear here, we are going to continue to give multiple opportunities for students to reach those passing and meeting that criteria. So I just am going to articulate that several times because that's an important part. We want them to earn the credit, but there is work that needs to be done. And so again, getting on those Google Sites and working with their teachers to earn those credits. And again, same thing on the right side for ninth through 11th grade students. And then again, this is just one more example of how we're going to make sure that there are safeguards in place, both for seniors and ninth grade opportunities. Again, you'll see right there on the left side, that personalized student graduation plan if students have not met the graduation requirements as of March 13th. And so I know staff continue to work with our students in that area, and then again, same thing with the safeguards clause for students that we may not be able to connect with. I will tell you this, one of the things when we talk about connections, we have made connection with every family in our school district, at least have had a touch point at least one time with all of our, our students and families within, within our community. Next, you're going to see, this is an opportunity that was for seniors in partnership with Champaign University. They have offered what's called BOLT. This was a free online class in Champaign to earn college credit. We have had 21 students that are taking this course, that are in the senior class. So again, this is a free opportunity, there is no cost to this, and they started their class today. So we're very excited to, to just share that with the board, when some of the opportunities that our seniors still have. And before I, I'm going to go back, before I move on, just, I want to share a little bit about, last Wednesday, we had a principal chat about graduation and some beginning steps. Principal Servigna has been working very hard with the seniors, the senior class, the leadership in the senior class about what graduation will look like. I'm going to say this, and she said it multiple times, this is currently what graduation looks like. As things change, which they could, we will continue to have conversation with the students and what they are really wanting. It's been very clear in the conversations with the students that they are wanting a similar type of approach that we have done on the football field. The guidance that came out from the Oregon Department of Education has allowed us to do some of that, but in small groups. So for example, it would be, if, if I'm a graduating senior, it might be me and two of my family members. We would go through that process on the field. There are some things that the staff have talked about that they would like to continue. We, we all know the tradition of the staff line and the congratulations that our kids receive from all of our staff at the high school. We're trying to find ways to do that in a safe manner that meets all the guidance of social distancing, as well as the kids have, you know, one of the things that we've, we've shared and heard that kids have not been able to walk out of the halls for the last time. And so we're looking at finding a way to, how do we allow them to do that in a safe manner? And take pictures and do all of that on the day that we had planned for graduation, which is June 5th. Again, some of these could continue to change based off of that. They have also said, based off of what the students' leadership and based off of the conversations they've had with the senior class, that on June 26th, they will do some sort of, what I'm going to call is an equivalent of a, of a virtual graduation put together with all the speeches, et cetera. So again, more to come with that, but that is the beginning stages and, and what we are developing for our seniors to graduate. The next is just, just some, again, that's sort of a K8 update on the focus, really focused on the distance learning. It's clear from the guidance from the Oregon Department of Ed that the conditions of care, again, is vital, and we've really grounded ourselves in that and making sure our families, and we have the social and emotional needs met, their mental health needs met as we, as we continue through this, continued connections within that process with families and students. We are focusing on a few core priority standards as we identified through the Teaching and Learning Team Subcommittee, and then we will continue to work through what does success look like in those variety of evidence of learning. It's very clear in, in the guidance that we will be moving all students forward. So it is recommended not to retain students at their grade level. And unless that process had already been started at the school level, all students will be rolling forward into the next grade. We'll continue to have conversations with families if they had started that process. We'll continue to have conversations with families if they had started that process. But again, we're going to, we're in the process of looking at a summer school, building summer school. You know, we're going to continue to have conversations about what next year looks like. But again, I just want to make that clear that that's one of the key things that we have been working through and will continue to work through from a retention end. Because again, there's a lot of things that we will, once we get back into whatever the environment's going to look like, which I'm going to talk about a little bit as well. The next slide is just a snapshot of meals. I think this is important to, on the left side, you will see the first week that we started meals, which was the week of March 16th. We averaged 545 students receiving breakfast and lunch each week, compared to the number the week of April 20th. We are averaging almost 1,000, a little under 1,000 students receiving breakfast and lunch each week. Our enrollment's 3267 as of the last time I looked, which was Wednesday. So again, almost a third of our students are coming to get meals from our sites. The next slide is just, again, that safety and security, because part of that is what we have had to build. So you see a couple different examples of the safety protocols that we've done and built entering any of our buildings, as well as procedures, once you're in that building and what that looks like. And then a couple pictures of just what that has looked like as we've developed some of our safety and security measures moving forward. Next is community partnership. I cannot say enough about the partners on this list. From our school-based mental health, to our behavioral health that continue to do telework with our families, to the Monmouth Independence Family YMCA, who is partnering with us in our childcare, to the City of Independence and City of Monmouth, who have been great thought partners for us as we talk about Wi-Fi and connectivity. And then again, Shemecata Community College, as well as Western Oregon, to allow us to do our board meetings here as an example. So just thankful to the community partners. We could not do this without you. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and I continue to look forward to working together with you as we work through this. And then last but not least, before I talk a little bit about our next steps. So this is our world in a couple pictures. You can see a couple pictures of our staff, how our staff meetings are done in Zoom meetings. You can see in the top middle, our bus drivers and all the coolers that they load to take to the different bus stops. You see the packets being put together for each of the students. You see up in the right corner, that's John, that's him working on our connectivity within the Traverse routing software to help us. You see just different schools, what they've done and how they keep the social distancing as they've returned belongings. You see a picture of the library, and as there, we're getting Chromebooks ready. You see bus drivers in our print shop, just phenomenal leadership by our staff in this school district. So I just have to again, give a huge shout out to our staff and what they have done. I think that picture in the upper left corner, which was sent to us by a family for just the, thanks for being there every day and giving me a lunch, because that's, you know, been very important to our community. So I cannot, and I will not stop saying, from the bottom of my heart to our staff, the relentless work, the hours that you have put in to help build this, I thank you. There's still work to be done, I know that, but your leadership in this process has been just amazing, and I just, I can't say enough. Sometimes it puts me speechless because I don't think they, people really understand the hard work that our staff has put in as we've really had to transition in less than a month. So here's really some next steps, and then I'll open it up to questions from the board before I go into the questions from the community. We're working on a student survey, because obviously, as we've gotten into this environment, we need feedback from them, what's working, what's not. Same thing with our families. So we're in the midst of building these surveys to get out to our families so we can continue to learn. We also need to do that with our staff. At the end of May, they're going to be almost two months into this as we continue to move forward. We're looking at picking and putting in additional belonging pickups, because not everyone has picked up their belongings. As I shared before, we're going to do Chromebook distribution. We're going to continue to implement, review, adjust, and adapt. We're looking at summer school. And then we are beginning conversations about the fall. And what I'm going to say, the governor in her executive order about a week and a half ago, closed schools, excuse me, closed schools through June 30th. Now, we're going to end school before that, but we, really, school is still closed. We are doing learning, but the learning in the school environment is actually closed. In part of that guidance, she has allowed to have individual and/or small group, but that, we are still waiting for the guidelines for that from the Oregon Department of Education, as well as the Oregon Health Department. I think one of the things in partnership with the YMCA, we have seen how they have built systems of how students come in to childcare in small groups, how they check out in small groups, how they deal with sickness in small groups, how they deal with staff sicknesses in small groups. I think we've had a lot of learning, because I do believe by partnering with them and some of the protocols at early learning, that may be similar protocols that we will need to put into place. I also want to be clear that I want our community prepared that the fall may look a lot like this. It may be continuing distance learning as we are now. It could be a mix of partly distance learning and partly small groups in. It could be having everybody back in the building. I don't know that that's realistic, but I do believe that, you know, we are starting to build different conversations that relates to the fall. So with that, I'm going to just close out and close the PowerPoint and open up the floor to the board with questions before I go into the part of our presentation that is dealing with public comment.
Yes, Jan.
I just want to thank you for such a thorough report. I appreciate the data, I appreciate the information, and I very much appreciate the way that you appreciate the community and the teachers and the staff. Good job.
They have, they have done phenomenal work, phenomenal work. And we're still learning, I want to be clear. This, our teachers have some training in this, but this has been a major shift. And so to watch the collaboration amongst our staff has been amazing. I get to sit and listen to teams collaborate and learn from each other, and I watch people pick up technology, and those that may not be good at it, share it with another person, and say things like, "You can do it. If I can do it, you can do it. And if I, if you can do it, and I can do it, then everybody can do it." So it's just been really thoughtful in those approaches. So thank you.
Other questions from the board? Yes, Jerry.
Couple things. My hat is off to the parents of the kids, because it's a whole different ballgame for them, because most of them are not instructor trained. So this is a whole new thing, having the kids home and trying to see that they do participate in their studies and things. And, and the other thing is, I had one question, is there paper packets or something going out to the families that has, was it 5% that don't have internet? So they got some hard copy workbooks type thing?
Yeah, so we are, that process is still part of their weekly process in each building. So those packets will continue to come to students that we have not connected with or that have said to us, "We don't have connectivity yet. Until we get it, we would prefer that." So our staff is continuing to build not only their lessons virtually, but also packet lessons to be able to be sent out that are aligned with the virtual learning. And Jerry, I appreciate what you said. I think we are trying to meet our families where they're at. And not always, I know that some families aren't pleased with us right now. But we are trying to reach every scenario that, as I shared at our last board meeting, from the nurse that's working nights, to the single dad that has lost his job, to the, to the student that's by himself, trying to stay on his or her routine throughout the day with their parents, because their parents are both essential workers. So we're trying to meet in every way with our families. Sometimes we've, we've made the mark good, other times we've missed it, we've learned from it, we've adjusted. I've seen some humbleness by our staff in some of the approaches that they've used and realize as they reflected, have communicated with students and families that they're sorry that that approach seemed a little abrupt. Because that's, Jerry, right, we are trying to meet families, every family where they're at, and every family's in a very different spot in our community.
Well, it's a great challenge all the way around, because, you know, parents are used to their kids being in school, their home, and anyway, but...
And we miss them, Jerry. Like, we miss them more than can even probably be explained how much we miss kids.
Well, I think for the most part, the family, the parents that I've talked to, they, most of them are trying to, you know, have some structure at home, so we're going to have school for a while, and then you can go run around for a while and that sort of thing, because, you know, it's just, you have to adapt.
Yeah. And physical fitness is good for the brain. It allows you to focus.
So, and my hat's off to you guys too, for all the, this is a ton of work, and two tons of work, and...
You have amazing staff.
And you're not going to, not everybody's going to be happy, but I think in the end, I think most of them will be. Once they get into it and see their kids are learning, I think most of the complaints will go away.
Other questions from the board before we go to the public comments? Why don't we go ahead and go to the public comments and questions?
Sure.
And then we can ask one more time if there are any questions from the board.
So one of the, yeah, absolutely. One of the first questions that was asked is, so how long is this going to continue on, this online learning? Because I know that there's a lot of, that's one of the big questions, and, you know, I appreciate the person that said, "I know this may be a difficult question to answer." But, so let me just lay out a couple pieces. We are still in the Stay Home Save Lives Executive Order by the governor. The schools are closed, not, learning's not closed, the schools are closed up through June 30th at this point. Because again, their first executive order was April 28th, and when that time came, she had to move that forward. The last day of school is going to still be in June, but we're in the midst of building some summer school planning. We hope to have a bit more information out in the next couple of weeks, and so we will continue to share that. There's a potential that that summer school will look a lot like what we are currently in. And potentially, if we get a little bit of lenience to bring in small groups, then we will start to move in that direction. But again, I want to be very clear about that. That language allows, it is in the executive order, but that's still a work in progress with guidance from the Oregon Department of Ed and the Oregon Health Authority. So we're trying to get to that, and hopefully, I'll maybe, we'll learn a little bit more tomorrow. As I shared with you before, every Tuesday and Friday, we as superintendents have meetings with the Oregon Department of Ed to gain information. So we're also meeting with them twice a week in meetings as we continue forward with this. As I said before, I want families to be prepared in the fall that this may look the same. I think it's very important that it could be, again, this distance learning that we currently have, or it could be a combination of the distance learning in the small groups. We could be fully back. I would not, and again, I want to be clear, the governor has not said this, but I would be amazed that we would be fully back up and running as we, what we call normal school in the fall. So I just want everyone to be prepared. We are going to build plans, we are already building different plans to support this. I have my maintenance person, my maintenance manager, and my safety and security director already laying out the size of classrooms, who's got the biggest hallways, all of those pieces if we can get kids into schools. And, and I want to be clear, we have six, I'm sorry, we have, we have seven sites to put children in. We have our five sites, we have, and again, I'm going to say, we have built in Henry Hill, our alternative learning. I think that will continue to expand in that environment, because that is, you know, we started a small program in there, and some of that will need to probably continue as we look at what that looks like. We have the new property right across from Ash Creek that has modulars on it that could be used or moved, potentially as we look at what those might be. So again, I just, I wanted, this is a hard one for me to answer, because I don't, and I'm going to say, you know, I know enough to know that this is where we're at. We have some guidance coming, but know that this is going to be a work in progress, and we'll continue to update and look at different plans as we get guided. So we are working on a couple different pathways of what the fall might, might look like. I do want to say that if you, you have a student that is struggling and may need some more one-on-one time, again, we were intentional about teachers setting up teacher hours, because we know that, again, that one-on-one connectivity is going to help students. So please, if you have a student, if you are a parent or a family member that has a student that's struggling, please know you can start that conversation. We do want the kids to be part of that conversation as well. But again, those hours are for our staff to be able to connect one-on-one with our, with our students and families. So again, and we're going to do connection, again, via email, phone call. A lot of the schools are using that apps, or for example, as Remind, and as well as our Google Meet. So that's that question. Again, similar question, what are your plans for reopening? Like I said, we're going to continue to build that and look at that. Like I said, we've mapped out everything, we're continuing to follow up with that guidance. And like I said before, I think that we're going to learn, I'm learning a lot, and I think Cece and I have had conversations in the opportunity to watch childcare do small groups, and how they enter and exit students, and how they deal with if a kid does have symptoms of being sick. I mean, there are some good protocols already in place that we could quickly, potentially pick up and begin to develop ourselves. But again, I'm waiting for that guidance to come from the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Department of Ed.
What we've learned, it takes little kids a super long time to stop and wash their hands every time they go in and out of the room, every time they have a different activity. It takes a long time.
Yeah. There will be, there will be a lot of hand washing, no matter, every transition will have a hand washing. So like I said, we're already starting to think about things and learn from the partnerships that we have. The next piece is tied to just some things, so one of the things we shared with our super, or with the principal chat is potentially allowing the seniors to walk through the halls for one last time. So one of the questions that I received is, can the elementary schools do that? So right now, no. We're, we're again, abiding by the Stay Home Save Lives and the executive order through June 30th. However, we know that we want to continue celebrations that we have in the schools, but we just need everyone to understand that they may look different. If we can build things to do safely and allow kids to be in buildings, and have the approval by the Oregon Department of Ed and the Oregon Health Authority, then we are going to work towards that. But I just want everyone to be prepared that celebrations like we do at the end of the year are going to look different. We are going to continue to try and engage those in the ways that we can, but I just want to be clear that that is going to look very different from what we have seen in the past. One of the questions, and then I'm going to turn a little bit, because there were some questions about the property, so Cece and I are going to talk a little bit about that together. But one of the questions says, "Why does our district seem so, to be so behind with the implementation of distance learning? Other similar-sized districts with the same equity challenges have been operational for weeks longer than we have." I want to be clear, we have been optional, we have been up and running since April 13th with two of the three pillars. We knew that the third pillar was going to be a heavy lift for us. So, and tied to that, "How will the state's required number of hours of instructional time be met if districts are on different paths?" So I want to be clear, there is, we are not being held to the instructional times because of the executive orders. Our time is now based off of the distance learning plans and the guidance from the Department of Education. So there is no instructional required hours for the 19, 20 school year. Because again, we are focusing on the distance and learning all criteria. I think it's very important to note that every community is different, even when we are looking at size or demographics that may be similar to us. I want to be clear that Colt Gill made it very clear that it's not the time to compare school districts as communities, even those next door to each other are different. And I'm going to continue to say this, our staff has done an amazing job of lifting And I'm gonna continue to say this, our staff has done an amazing job of lifting and shifting to distance learning, which involves, again, teacher-led learning, supplemental activities, as well as meals and mental health or wellness of our students, which are the three pillars of distance learning. Like I said, we had pillars up and running as of April 13th, and I told you, I was very clear from the beginning that the safety and security of the virtual learning has, and was my priority. So, yeah, we did go a little bit slower. I have watched school districts around us and in other states go fast and have to completely stop and revamp, and I know that can be frustrating for communities. So, I understand that, that we are trying to, and I'm gonna go back to what Jerry said, we are trying to meet every family where they are as best as possible and work with them through this process. So, like I said, we're, we're learning and growing, we're gonna adjust as we get information, we continue to adjust. You know, we adjusted, we have adjusted multiple pieces as we learn, as our, our staff has, have started the virtual learning classes, and will continue to, to do that. The next question really focused on the property. So, at last school board meeting, can you please provide an update on the planned property acquisition discussed at the April school board meeting? Is the sale final? What was the purchase price? Are there any immediate plans for facility modulars? And what is the timing of these plans? So, I'm gonna add and Cece fill in where I don't, so the sale of the property across from Ash Creek is sold, and the school, has been finalized by the school district. The purchasing price was $775,000 out of our capital contingency funds. And I'm gonna remind everybody, there are two different funds within school district. Capital contingency funding, which is, can only be used for buying buildings or, or building buildings, or renovating buildings. And then you have your general school fund is where the, what I call the day-to-day functions that we are, that we have are budgeted. So, you have two different funds. So, I think I want to just make sure that that's clear to everybody. The property consists of 2.36 acres, 9,370 square feet in all the buildings. There are three double-modular buildings, along with a shed and a parking lot with 48 vehicles and various other things that are inside the, the space thus far. Cece, anything else you want to add from that, that perspective that I? I think this becomes one of our properties that we get to put into the mix as we look at, you know, bringing students back into the building. So, again, that's still some of the work in progress that we're, we're doing to make sure that we have the right spaces when and if we can get students back into, to schools, because that was a big part of our conversation initially in, in purchasing the property.
Yeah, I think there's, the, the property is in really great shape now that we've been able to be in even further. Of course, we had a full professional inspection, we had the appraisal, so we knew a lot about the property, but it is in very good shape. There were a lot of things in the, in the church that they, the, the group wasn't able to take with them, the congregation from Ash Creek Bible Church. I've been in contact with our local faith community, and they will be, have an opportunity to go in to look through hymnals, things like that, that are still there. We want to make sure that they get a chance to, to have some of those things that would be meaningful to them. So, we're sort of taking an inventory of what is in the building, what we can use, what we would need to be able to use it for. The modulars, for example, if we need to, you know, do something with those to make them ready for learning, or, again, the very large space that we can use for training, the kitchen, we haven't had to use it yet for food storage or preparation. Alex's team, he'll report to you, is doing a tremendous job of feeding families, but it is, we're, we'll get it cleaned up and ready to go if we need it. So, all of that is there. I guess it's, it's really hard to say. You know, we don't know what this fall will look like. We, as Jen said, there's a lot of options. There may be families who find that this kind of learning environment does work better for them and their students. So, we want to be prepared to continue to serve students in distance learning if that works for them. We may find we actually have fewer students in our buildings in the fall, even if we came back in full, which we don't think we'll do, but if we were to, there may be families who will continue on this distance learning path with us, and we hope that's the case. We'll build a robust ability to take care of that. So, sort of picking up those portables and deploying them to the schools that we felt would need them in the fall. We're not quite ready to do that yet, but though, but they are there, we're gonna make sure that they are ready to go if we, if we determine, once, once we start doing some of these surveys of families, I think we'll know more about what fall looks like. But I am particularly want to be ready for summer, because as the superintendent said, we are able, we'll be able to, not only, we'll be able to start serving small groups of students who need extra supports, who did fall behind during this time, who didn't have what they needed to, to get to, as she mentioned, those credits, or the pass, or whatever. But also, some of our students who just need personalized support in any case. We want to be able to serve them this summer, and, you know, each, each of our other buildings have some limitations on having students. So, having that extra space to bring kiddos in, who we can work with safely over the summer is gonna be huge, and that's our goal right now, to get that ready. All of our custodians, as she mentioned, are busy with projects, trying to get things done, because summer, when they typically would have the ability to do that, they know they need to be ready to have students potentially in every building in the district this summer. So, that's, it's working out well for us to have all of that ready to go.
So, again, it's just, it's shifting work, and, I mean, it's, it's just a different, different approach from that perspective. The other question is, what's the status of the two other properties owned by the district that were being considered to be sold? I've heard that Oak Grove facility may have conditions that would hamper the district's ability to market the property. So, is this true?
So, the Oak Grove property and the Eola property that the board declared surplus, the Eola property doesn't have any restrictions on it, and I think we've mentioned, there were, there are two parcels at Oak Grove. One is the, the school, the, the small piece of property, the school is on. That had a restriction in the 1865 deed that was deeded to a school district, that it needed to remain a school. The property wasn't donated, it was actually sold to the, to the school district at that time, not this school district, because we didn't exist. So, we wanted to research that and see if that was, in fact, a, a restriction on the sale of the property. Our attorney, John Hasbrook, who specializes in this sort of thing, worked with a title company, and that title company reviewed every transaction throughout the time as this, as this property changed hands several times, and they, the title company has indicated they would provide title insurance on it without that restriction, which is the hang-up, right? Because if they cannot guarantee title, and they won't write a title insurance on it, they said it has changed hands a few times, and that restriction was not carried through into future deeds. So, that restriction is, is not a barrier to the sale. And the farmland property, which the district purchased in 1995, it doesn't have a restriction on it, but it does ha, give the sellers the right of first refusal. So, they have the opportunity, if we find a buyer for the property, they have an actual opportunity to purchase the property to meet the purchase price. Both, the, the family that sold it to us has dispersed, we cannot locate anyone in the area, but again, our attorney, John Hasbrook, has, has tracked down some of the folks that, that were in that original family, and is contacting them to determine if they want to hold on to that, or if they want to waive the right of first refusal. So, as soon as we get that information, we can go ahead with the sales, and I just got that information from him today. So, we will go ahead and market those properties. And, you know, any potential buyer would have to know if this right of first refusal is there, we will just have to disclose that. But there is, there, the use of the property is whatever is in the zoning, not in any special deed restriction.
And then the final question is, what are the district's plans for positions that were going to be hired with funds from the Student Success Act? Is a district reconsidering hiring additional positions or slowing down the process until after the revenue forecast is released in May? All indications are that the forecast will likely be coming in lower than initially estimated. Does the district have plans to conserve as much resources as possible in the current school year for the next school year? So, here is what we have done at this time. We froze all positions that potentially were going to be posted three, over three weeks ago? Yeah, it's three weeks ago. So, we are, we have a hiring freeze on right now, so any positions that we were thinking about posting are on hold. We have began conversations, and our goal, yes, is to conserve as much as possible. And I want to be clear that I'm trying to keep the district whole. That's my goal, but we will know more after the third quarter revenue, which is released May 20th. And so, Cece, we continue to already look at budgets, we're already in the budget process. I think it's also important that even as we talk about our staff and, and working with our union leadership, and I want to be clear, our, I have made aware, both of our union leadership teams of the potential budget concerns. We're working on sharing some information out collectively together, because, like I said, as I, as I have started from, from the beginning here, that we're gonna collectively have voices to help make those decisions. But again, I, I think things are gonna look different. So, the needs, and Cece hears me say a lot, I think especially we're in this environment, we need people and technology. If you were to ask me in a normal school year, what types of things do we need, my answer would probably be a little bit different, and so those are some of the things that we're having to process through of what that would, would look like. Like I said, we've, we have begun conversations. I think because of the third quarter revenue, we have adjusted and, and are adjusting our board budget meetings, because we will have more information. That means, right now, both Lissa, who is our HR director, and Cece, they are building lots of different scenarios for us to look at. We are building a budget at the fully funded to start. I will also say that this is gonna go back to our strategic plan and our strategic goals and the objectives that the community made, the community made very clear. We will make decisions based off of that, as well as if we are still in the distance learning environment. So, I don't want people to panic yet. I think there is concern that we will need to do, we are, or we are in the midst of conserving budget, because it, it is important. But again, that is going to be more to come as we get those third quarter revenues on May 20th. And then, Cece, I'm gonna, questions or anything that you would like to add about this process that we are starting?
Yeah, I think the question, there was a part that was specific to the Student Investment Act, Student Investment Account, and again, as we built that extensive plan, there were 50 initiatives in the plan, and most of them involved hiring new staff of some sort. We, my finance officers, we meet once a week as well across the state, and we are being advised that the Student Investment Account money, which is separate from the general fund, it's separately designated, is very likely to be delayed or reduced significantly. That's, comes from the corporate activity tax. So, those positions are not being hired. Basically, we will potentially budget for the, hope for the best, plan for the worst. Whether or not any of those initiatives will be funded in this year, I cannot tell you at this point, but we will be prepared one way or the other.
And then, and I answered this, but I'm gonna do it. So, one of the questions was, where do we get packets if we haven't received them? Please reach out to either your teacher and/or the building principal, because if you're not receiving packets, we just, we've been trying to confirm phone numbers and addresses, and we, we did collect a lot of that, but again, if you are not receiving a packet, please connect with a teacher and/or your building principal to be able to make sure that you're getting those packets.
Very good. Well, Superintendent, thank you very much for that comprehensive overview and update for the board and the community. I actually like getting the public questions ahead of time, it actually works even better, I think, than some of our standard board meetings. So, with that, we'll move on to the financial reports. Cece?
Yeah, thanks. Chair love, included is the financial report through, through March 31st. So, things were just kind of chugging along, and we were going through, and it's typically a little bit of lull in activity in finances, partly because of spring break, but it usually comes back with a vengeance, and it changed drastically our, the kinds of expenses that we are focused on throughout the end of March and the month of April are very different, as mentioned. So, I, I probably will come back and report this to you as of the 30th of April, which I typically don't do. Typically, we do this once a quarter, I'll probably present this report to you monthly just to show where we are on our line items, because they are changing. As mentioned in the report to you, the revenue is coming in, we are ahead on our property tax revenue, which always is nice in the current year, but they take that into account next year when they do our look back. And I did also mention a, a planned, what I, what I have received information on that'll come through in May, and that is our high-cost disability grant. Last, each year, we, we kind of get an advance, they, the state gives us some extra money to deal with those special, special needs students who actually we have extra costs for. And that could include interpreters, nursing care, specialty services like that. So, last year, we got a really large one-time payment of a million dollars. That far exceeded what we typically get for that, even, and even though I, I planned for, for a look back on that, I planned to have that taken away this spring, and I was really close. I think I was within $17,000 of what they would claw back. I think I budgeted 350, and they clawed back 363 of the million. So, that part we had planned ahead for, but this year, we submitted $1.5 million in high costs, in extra costs for, to meet student health needs. And I thought, gee, well, you know, we might get around the million again. Unfortunately, we did not. We got another 600,000. So, that's gonna create a shortfall. We did, we planned the look back for last year, but we planned to get a better advance this year than we got. That's a pie, it's a finite pie, and it is distributed around the state based on the number of students and the dollar value of those needs. Just a plug there, the Student Success Act, the money that's not to come to each school, that includes money to up this pie. So, if there is commercial corporate activity tax money, and it comes through the Student Success Act part, the part that the state directly uses to subsidize or supplement- part that the state directly uses to subsidize or supplement current activities, that pie could increase in the future. I anticipate if there is any corporate activity tax money, it will actually go to that first. So rather than the part that comes to districts to add new services, I imagine that some of those services will be funded. So hopefully we can make up a little bit of that next year. But that's the revenue side. Overall, it actually kind of about evens out. So I do anticipate our revenue's still coming in about where we planned. We received word that our May payment from the Oregon Department of Education, which is the last payment we receive. We actually don't receive a payment in June. We receive a payment in May, and then we receive a double payment in July. So our last payment in May, in the past, when budgetary concerns have hit, even that payment has been reduced. That is not the case this year. We are getting our full state school fund payment for the month of May. July, however, we anticipate that's where we will have to make adjustments potentially. So what I'm trying to do now, of course, as we mentioned, is we want to preserve and carry over as much of this budget as we can. Because the only way to be able to weather cuts is to have more balance on hand this year, right? Those cuts are going to come from the state school fund source. We don't know what yet, but those cuts will come. And the more of this year's money we can preserve and protect and carry forward, the better we can fill those gaps and plan for the future. So we've obviously not spending money on substitutes. We aren't hiring substitutes. We are not spending money on professional development, training, travel. Spring is busy with those activities. Out of the general fund, you know, we saved some. We didn't hire softball and baseball umpires, right? So we've got some general fund savings there that we typically use to support our spring athletics and our spring activities. We're not spending as much on heat and light, right? Our water bill's probably going to go down considerably, because we don't have everybody flushing toilets in our buildings. We're cutting back on our exterior maintenance, for example. So these, the bad thing is, you don't save much by cutting back in May, April, May, and June, right? It doesn't save quite as much as you'd like to be able to carry forward. But everybody who is currently monitoring those things are really working to preserve and protect what we can. So we have more to carry forward to help fill in the gaps from the funding cuts we anticipate. So that...
And I, you know, again, we, you're going to hear a lot, if you haven't already, of a lot of different approaches people are starting to take. I think it's important that May 20th is a big, is a big day. That will give us an idea of, you know, potentially how much of the state school fund, because right now, we're budgeting from the $9 billion. Correct me if I'm wrong, $9 billion, right?
$9 billion for the biennial.
For the biennial, thank you.
Yeah, the two-year total appropriation to schools.
But I, but again, we are trying to look at ways to save and, you know, move forward. So just know that more conversation will come. We are running a lot of different scenarios. We talked for almost an hour today, just our leadership team, about the different scenarios and what that might look like. I want to be clear that union leadership is going to be partnered in with this. We've started those initial conversations, because that's very important to me, as we work through that process. And then, you know, we'll continue to gather information if and when we have to, if that process is where we do have to make cuts. Again, I'm not, I'm not going there yet, because I'm trying to work with Cease and our staff, and what we need to make sure that we can shift and move and save, and then continue to have those. But conversations are starting. So there are some very intentional conversations that are happening with our leaderships within the district.
Any questions about that? Cease?
All right. I don't see any questions, so we'll move on to an update from Alex Singer, our food service director. Alex, I'll turn it over to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So in your packets, you should have a couple of different information sheets. One is the fiscal, the fund income statement, and the other is just some, an update with some, you know. As far as the income foods, fund income statement, that is, as Cease mentioned earlier, through the end of March, our revenue was up a little bit through March, and our incentives were also up a little bit, unfortunately. But we are moving forward. In comparing our reimbursements this year during this time, we are actually close to reimbursements that we received last year. We're not tanking there. We're trying, we're pretty much holding steady. In a couple of weeks, we've actually got up a little bit. But we're still moving forward on that. As far as serving kids, we are pushing lots of kids, lots of meals through to kids. As of today, we've served over 65,000 meals. That's over 32,000 students are receiving two meals, both breakfast and lunch. We are serving at all five schools. Townes, we're offering weekly meals, where parents can come and pick up either five or seven, eight packs of meals. They'll only need to come once a week. The other four buildings are serving daily meals, where we see a lot of families walking and kind of enjoying a timeout, walking out to get their meals. And we also have the buses, which are delivering out to about 28 stops, I believe, throughout, outside of the walking zone. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have posted on our website where those 28 bus stops are? If family or community wants to see where those are?
We will look into that. I don't think we do, but we can, I don't think that that would be difficult at all to be able to get that information out.
We do have information, we have put information out to families about it, including how to contact John, the transportation, and he's been able to reach out to a lot of families that are out in that. They've initially reached out to all the families outside of the walking area and made contact and offers the services and found out where they were and what they needed. And we've been adding to that as we go.
I do have a...
Yeah, we have a question here in the room, from Jan.
All right.
This, this might seem a little silly, Alex, but what kind of food is in the five-to-seven day meals? I mean, I'm thinking, go ahead.
Okay. Well, we've done, in talking with the Health Department during the first week, we tried to find out what some good options were, so we did not burn everybody out with sandwiches every day. So we've increased our offerings. We do, we offer food that can be warmed up. And we asked families when they pick up, if they want something, if they have the ability to heat food. And the vast majority of us have said yes. And we offer burritos, slices of pizza, corn dogs, hamburgers, cheeseburgers, chicken sandwiches, chicken nuggets, all things that are favorites of the students and easy to cook. We still do deli sandwiches. We have had families say, you know, my kid really wants peanut butter jelly. Can you do that? We have a few families that have allergy restrictions, so we have doctor's notes, and we're able to take care of them as well. We were in touch with them fairly regularly. They would ask questions, and they've been working with us really well.
So is fruit or vegetable included with those meals?
Absolutely. We are, we're still, the USDA and the state have given some flexibility in meal components, but we have not taken them up on that. We are still feeding the full component meals that we would normally serve during our summer meal service. So there's fruits, there's vegetables, there's milk, there's protein and grain in every meal.
Thank you.
And I was incorrect. The bus routes are on the website.
Yes.
They are actually on the COVID-19 link. So you'll see, you will see a link that's called Meal Distribution, and it's both in English and Spanish. So yes, thank you for that, Emily. I appreciate the share.
Yep, it's in one of our health announcements that we did. So you just kind of have to go through the titles of them, because each one is a little bit different. But yep, those are there.
And I would love to add one more thing. We spoke earlier about personal developments. During this time, we were actually able to get some additional training to our staff that they've never had before. It's the SERF Safe Training, which is kind of the national standard, or the industry standard, training for food safety. It's above and beyond the health card or the food handler's permit from the Health Department. I have the certification, but right now, we're getting a lot of our staff to get that certification. The company that does it is, during this time, offered it free of charge to people in this time just to, as their, their offer during the COVID event. So many of our staff are taking advantage of it, and we're working on getting as many people, if not all, certified during this time.
That's great. Well, Alex, thanks very much for the update, and I have to commend you and your team. You guys are doing a wonderful job. Jennifer, every night texts the board and lets us know how many meals are served every day. And we understand the importance of that in our community and how it's one of the pillars of our distance learning. So you guys have adjusted really quickly and are doing a fabulous job. So thank you, Alex, and please pass that along to your team.
Absolutely. They, they do, they're putting in a lot of hard work.
Yeah, they're being really...
You know, I'm kind of guiding them, and you know, I've got a few things I'm doing. They are really, yeah, they've really, really stepped up and really shown that they care, and they have a lot to do with making this happen.
They haven't had a day off. They didn't take a spring break that some of them usually take. They didn't get that first week off to start planning and preparing. That Monday after we found out we were going to be closed, the week before spring break, they were in the kitchens. So they, we keep trying to remind them. They, they, they need to step back and do some, something, but they want to be in kitchens, they want to be cooking and handing out food to kids. So they are tremendous.
That's amazing. Okay, that brings us to our board report, which will be very brief. It's just a reminder, our next board meeting is the first Monday in June, June 1st. We will have a Budget Committee meeting on...
May 18th. So two days before the forecast comes out, we will get the first look at our budget, probably our as-is budget, the only information we have, and then start talking about what that process would look like for prioritizing based on future information.
We don't have any other special meetings at this point, so just make sure that the Budget Committee meeting's on your calendars.
And it will be held here as well, and call in.
Okay.
The budget meeting will live, people will be able to come in live here or call in, but we're limited in the number of folks we can have in the room. So we'll be determining who needs to be here in the room.
I have been trying to keep up with OSBA articles that are coming out. They're doing a pretty good job of getting information out. I was able to listen in to a conference call they had last week on how to conduct board meetings virtually, which was pretty good. I also have been talking today, just through email, with Brandy Penner, who is our regional representative on the board. She was asking if we needed any help with our virtual meetings. I said, no, I think we're in good shape. But then I also suggested to her that with, you know, what's likely happening with budgets, that perhaps in late May, we get together as a subregion and just talk about how each of the districts are thinking about making adjustments, so that we get, I mean, obviously, it's a local decision, it's a local district. But in this particular situation, there's probably a lot to learn from our surrounding districts. And so Brandy liked that idea, and she and I have been looking for dates. And so I'll keep you posted on that.
Great, that's good.
Okay, that concludes our reports for tonight. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is our typical minutes and personal recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I shall move.
Thank you, jury. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jan. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Think we have to do this verbally? So Aurelia, do you want to facilitate that, or? Do you want me to just do it quick? Jerry? I'll do it. Jerry?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Vidal?
Yep, aye. Yes.
Peggy?
Aye.
And Darcy? Do we still have Darcy? Are you there?
Unmute. Unmute thyself.
Yes.
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 That's a yes.
We have a visual. Yes, okay. And I am also a yes, so the consent agenda passes. That, we're going to start wrapping up the meeting now. So we are at the point now where if a board member has any comments they'd like to share, we can do that. Are any comments from the board members? Jerry?
I have, this is a suggestion for when you get ready to have the students who want to walk through the building one last time. Being an old farm boy, we used to raise chickens, and you had a little foot bath, about half an inch of disinfectant in a tray. And you walk through that before you go in the chicken house, so you don't take stuff in there. But probably more sanitary would be for school. You know, they have these cheap little paper booties that probably cost 50 cents or 25 cents a pair. Just put on a pair of those, and when you go out of the building, throw them in the garbage.
We, and Jerry, we have, we've rented seven hand washing stations as well, that we have dispersed across the school district. So we will, I mean, again, we have to process and build all those protocols to even allow into the building. So that's going to be a big part of our process. So I appreciate that, suggestions as we, as we work through those plans, because we'll need to.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments from board members?
Just a quick one. Steve, I've generally been fairly quiet, because I'm not wanting to interrupt unless we have something positive to add. But I just wanted to add my thank you to the administration and staff and all the hard work that we know is going on, although it isn't always as visible. And so thank you, Jen, for that, and to all your staff, and to the teachers, and the unions, and everybody else involved. And then one just quick note is, speaking of kids in buildings, in about two weeks, there'll be a new community youth center that's full, but is finished but empty for a while. So...
That's awesome.
We are working on ideas to be able to use that as soon as we're able to gather even small groups together. But certainly, if there are ways that the district or those of, the others of you that are working with kids can make use of 11,000 square feet of youth center, let me know.
We will be in contact to start those. Thank you.
Any other board members with comments? Okay. We are going to be adjourning into executive session tonight. So we will transition, we'll stay on the line here, and this meeting will transition to just board members and the superintendent, business manager here in the room. So...
And Lissa's, I'm in, the HR manager, will stay on the line.
Okay, and Lissa will stay on the line as well. Thank you, Cease. So I will then read our disclaimer for moving into executive session. So the Central School District Board will now meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, which allows the board to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations, deliberations... session. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room, virtually. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final action or decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. The board is not expected to resume business after the executive session this evening. So with that, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you for all that we're able to listen in tonight, and once again, appreciate all the, the hard work that's been going on in the district.